All right. Good evening. This is the Policy Crosswalk Committee for Harwood School Board. In attendance, we have Dr. Mike, myself, and Danielle. Sorry, I'm tongue tied today. We start every meeting with public comment. Being nobody but us. We're gonna move on from that. We need a, I move to approve meetings from last minute, minutes from last meeting.
It's summer. It's our first one. It's fine.
Right.
I second.
Thank you. If it's just us, and I approve and you seconded, I'm gonna say pass. All right. First up. Combine E11 relating to idling of vehicles with F9, which I saw Danielle.
Yeah, from the June meeting, Shannon and I went through all the notes from that meeting, and we were down to the end. So we seem to be in a really good spot.
Yeah, it looks like we've come full circle to now getting new VSBA recommended policy. Never ending. Fine. Okay, so you guys did suggest a combined one, which was very helpful. I have Danielle's here. I can share it. Or Mike can share it.
I can share it.
Okay, because I don't have permission.
Okay, I can do that. And I'll change that too, so anyone can share.
Thank you.
All right. Do you still want me to share? I changed permissions. Okay, let's see.
Okay.
There it is.
All right. Danielle, I saw you moving a lot of things around, so thank you for that. It looks like you caught a lot of E11 and put it up into F9. My only thing is, like, you had school grounds kind of as a sub down here.
Oh, thank you. Yes, good catch.
I just figured we'd throw it into the definitions. But otherwise, I would like to accept all of your proposed changes. And go forward with this one.
Okay, great. And just to, there was a sentence in the old, in one of them, that talked about school buses and proposed rule six years, or I just added that as a footer in number four under that one, just so you know where that particular sentence went.
Perfect. Which, is that, Mike, is that now no longer proposed? That's still proposed?
That's already, I'll double check, but I believe that's already
Approved.
Statute. Let me see.
So could that be updated by Shannon, if it is?
Yes, that is the current rule.
Is it still rule 6001?
Yes. 6001, school bus idling.
Okay. All right, so then I propose to move forward with that one.
Great.
With a request to Shannon to clean up any formatting. Just because I thought there was.
Yeah, there's some different font stuff and whatever, and I just didn't get too fancy with it.
I appreciate that.
It's A.
All right, moving on. Review new VSBA recommended policy for distribution. Why does this look like identical to something else we already have? Is this just the updated part?
It's the updated language and just, you have to make your decision as to what option the board wants. Option A or option B?
I would propose that we put forward option B, but it'll obviously let the board see option A for their consideration. But I think that with some edits that I made to option B, I favor that because it feels too restrictive to not allow any.
It, from a practical point of view of superintendent, it doesn't make any sense to have A, but I think the board should see it.
Yes.
Agreed.
But I didn't really make any edits to it because I don't agree with it.
Right. Right. It's not how we operate.
No.
Okay. All right, so then, I'm, I had, I started looking at this, and honestly, like, I've watched Danielle as you made all the edits I was gonna make. Well, okay, we'll just sit back and let it happen.
That's why I typed into that other one. I'm currently working on this, so you might want to wait.
Yeah.
We're like stepping on each other's toes.
I appreciate it.
So it's okay if we adjust some of the language like I did in that first sentence, right?
Yeah, I like, I liked your changes. I guess I should share for anybody that wants to watch this later. Yeah, so focusing on option B because that's one we like. I liked this. I enjoyed the, the limiting, you know, to be a benefit to the student body and our families. That was I liked that. I'm fine with deleting comprised of the school district employees. But was that just because you felt like it was too limiting and we should
I did, and I think about like some of the things we have. We have a lot of involvement from our community and the idea that a business may want to come in and do, you know, information about, I don't know, job opportunities they have available for juniors and seniors in the summer. I don't know. So, but, but the idea that it just being limited to school district employees felt too restrictive when we have a very involved community in our schools.
Okay.
Nice. I think that's appropriate. And I like how you combined the
Yeah.
But I do want to make sure.
Again, I, I seek to make sure we, we acknowledge any activities, not just athletics.
Right, which I feel like that, you know, recreational activities covers.
It's inclusive, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, what were you trying to make sure?
I just want to make sure that Shannon keeps option A in the draft.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I was just gonna, cool.
And I did add, which I don't know why it's not showing in, in this draft anymore, but further down in this policy, under number three, about denying a request, I added letter D, which has to do with anything that promotes discriminatory activities in addition to unlawful. So it just had unlawful, Mike, and I also added discriminatory. I didn't know if there was other things we should add, but it, I think about the action that was taken around the school flag. I know that was a vandalism, but this idea that we would, you have the right, if anything, what looks discriminatory to, to also deny it.
No, I like that as long as Tori's the lawyer on the committee, so Tori, think
I, I think, I think it goes in line with our, the equity policy work as well, you know, so I think that's, yeah, I think that's a good addition.
Is that the right language, Tori?
Too. My brain's not working that well.
Or do we reference the equity policy? You know, that would also
No, I like, I like, I like the discriminatory language that you used, or, you know, I'm trying to say. I, I appreciate the addition of that word.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry it wasn't showing because I already accepted it.
Okay, perfect.
Had it again right there. Okay. God, moving so fast. Okay. Board meeting and regular board meeting. Danielle, which
So I would open C1, and I learned from Mike before you jumped on that we've already approved C1, which we knew, and then we saw the procedure and we wanted to combine them. So I did make edits, but Mike's gonna check with Shannon to make sure I didn't muck with the original, because what we would be looking to do is then reopen C1 and, and probably what, re-approve it, Mike. But C1 is the one that I used as my base to combine everything into.
So, so, so Shannon and I met, we probably went through this for about 15 minutes.
Hold on, wait, wait. Mike, unfortunately, I don't have edit access for some reason. Can you just put it up?
I had that same problem.
Yeah, can you put it up on the screen before you?
Let me first show, just to give some context. So, one of the things we went through is, and this is the custom policy versus non-custom policy, and this is the website. So, C2 is the policy that the board recently reviewed. It's still kind of in the queue for approvals. But go back to closing that out. C1 was a custom, was the custom policy. C2 is what you already looked at. So the last time the two of you talked about kind of the, the procedures and kind of merging some of those aspects of it. So that's why we proposed the way we did. So it was more of a discussion of, do you want to consider that? Do you want to merge something into C2, or should we keep this as a custom policy with a little bit of the procedures in place? It, it was so confusing just because
Right.
What the board did previously was to break apart policies into different sections, and then it wasn't parallel to what the School Board Association was recommending, if you're following what I'm saying.
Yes, and so what we were given is, we were given C1, the policy, and we were given C2, the procedure. So that's why I combined them by looking at the VSBA board meeting recommendation into C1. So however we need to do this, I feel like we only really need one policy around board meetings, and a combined policy makes the best sense, even if that means we need to bring back to the board a policy we've already approved and have them re-approve it.
Okay.
You know, review it, edit and re-approve.
Yeah, I agree too, because this section of the policy is really, it, it's not, when, when you put it in administrative procedure, this is all really board-related business.
Yeah.
So it, it's not something that I deal with. It's really what the board wants, and it doesn't make sense to have, to me, it doesn't make sense to have three different sections for the same kind of creation.
Yep. Yes. So if somebody can open, I can open C1, but I don't think I can share my screen.
I think he gave you access.
Yeah, I gave everybody access now.
Okay, so let me share my screen here.
Right, members of the public are missing out. They could put up Disney movies for us right now.
Totally do that. All right, I just have to, I've never shared in Zoom, so give me one second. Share. And I want to share this one. And share. It's like so many steps here.
There we go.
Can you see? Okay?
Yeah.
So this I pulled from the VSA, the VSBA one.
Yep.
And then I don't know if this is the right language, but this was stuff that additionally we had already had dealing with just agenda, preparation and distribution. So it just expounds, to my opinion, on this open meeting law.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good with that addition, policy sentence. You can accept that. I, I can't get access, so I can't even see it beyond what you're sharing. So if you want to click the accept button, then go for it. It's just on this side towards the right. You just hit the little check mark that's attached to it.
Oh. It's all very fancy. Yeah. Oh, my goodness. Um, I think I got it all.
Yeah.
All right, so then there was all this junk in the procedure and in the VSBA one about the, the meetings, and I remember Tori, you and I looking at that and going, why would we, you know, restrict ourselves to, you know, days of the month when it's not always consistent. So I tried to keep it generic, but put this intent of meetings, and I believe at least twice monthly during the school calendar year is what we do.
I agree. I think that's, I think that's an accurate statement, and I do appreciate that, like, you didn't, you know, I mean, yeah, the recommended one asked to put like day of the month, but I agree, it's just, it's
And time and everything, right?
Yeah, it's too restrictive. Yeah.
And then I, I figured, Mike, you could have Shannon insert the website. I know that there's been updates or is being updates to the school district website, so I didn't want to
Right.
do that. The only thing I didn't put is like where they're held, because I think that's also on the website.
It is, and, and that's the, it, it's also warned, and that's the legal notice, so to, to put it in the policy, if it, if the board in a year decides to change it across a brook, it, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Policy in general.
Okay, so then in addition to publishing the schedule, they can ask Mike for a copy. That was in the procedures.
Yes.
Um, I would suggest changing the title just to meeting schedule, since we do talk about special and emergency right below that.
Thank you. Good point. Okay, and there were two footnotes that I didn't pull forward that were tied under these, Mike, which I thought Shannon could just do that busy work.
Yep.
Um, but just were definitional. So this was a copy and paste.
Yeah. I feel like that third sentence needs to go somewhere else.
This one here?
No, no, the all meetings of the board will be conducted in accordance.
Yeah, that was in the procedures, and I couldn't think of where else that would be, so where else I could go, but I can absolutely move that. I was
Maybe just, maybe just under the title of policy.
Here.
Like, yeah, just at the, like, do a new paragraph and throw that in.
I can do it. Because it doesn't fit with agendas either, so.
Right, but it is, you know, broad. This is the plan.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I'm good. Oh, wait, sorry, keep going. There we go.
Executive sessions. Again, this was a copy and paste.
Perfect, yep. I'm good accepting everything above that, including that.
I'll do that when we get to that, because it's
Thanks.
So here's the agenda preparation, and this is, the green is from, directly from the procedures. This sentence I just moved from the bottom. It was actually part of this policy.
Yeah.
We based it in the wrong place.
What do we feel? I'm not
Do we need this?
So I feel like we kind of need it, but I, I'm wondering if it could just be, you know, like a, in a paragraph instead of a list.
It's easier to read in a list, if you want my opinion on that, but
Fair.
I mean, the, the only other description in this policy was just this. It will include all items in which the board will take action.
Well, I don't think we even have an eight board feedback.
Do we want to just take it out?
I, yeah, take it out.
Can we though say that public comment will be at every meeting immediately following the call to order?
Yes.
Okay. All items, da-da-da-da-da. Every
Why not just, will include public comment as well as? Oops.
I think it's important to put when, because that will ensure people show up and they'll miss it, and it's not open for them to comment throughout the meeting.
Well, not only that, but it drives me crazy following Florida school board stuff, in that they make public comment wait until the very end, and I feel like that's a weird little
Yeah.
power tactic, and I don't like it. So I, I like putting it as it's gonna happen first, and this is your chance. Yeah, thank you.
Are we good with these changes then?
I'm good with those changes, yeah.
Okay, and then I didn't really change anything about the distribution, because we've already approved that, and we feel good about it.
Okay.
Is this okay? I'll read it.
Yeah, I'm good. All right, so all that is under
Okay.
So I will see one, right?
Yes, and Mike will make sure I didn't totally muck up stuff.
I, I just made some notes for Shannon.
Okay, she's gonna like pull her hair out. Sorry, Shannon. You're watching this later, my apologies. Okay, so she can then make everything pretty and do all her magical.
Yep.
Beautiful. All right, sounds good. And then next up is the fundraising policy, which I think is very important considering all the discussions regarding the costs of our school district and people wanting to fundraise.
And I just sent you a version that I copied and pasted. The problem is, when I put it in my Google Docs, Mike, it didn't track my changes.
Oh, okay.
So I could share my screen with you all. I have nothing.
Let's see.
Drive it here.
I see it.
I don't know why I didn't, didn't keep my
I wonder
Do you want me to just share my screen and then we can, oh, it's still not doing it. I was trying to
And I just put in the minutes, the link to the, to what we are just looking at right now, Tori, so that Shannon can see that.
Perfect.
Do you want me to share the version that does have track changes?
Yes, please.
Okay. To do that thing again. Nor the fact that my thing crashed.
Sorry, because it's showing.
It's coming.
For me, it's not showing it.
Can you see it?
Go, go to the very top, Danielle, and click on the, just click on the share button, because I'm not seeing.
Okay, it says it's sharing, but it's not.
I mean, I can, I can see it.
I'm sorry, I can see it, but go to the top. I, I want to see what version that is. If you go to the top of the document, that
It won't, because this is my own. I just copied
Okay.
the body of that, so it's H5, and I just copied the body of it to be able to track changes.
Okay.
Because I, like Tori, I didn't have edit rights to this one.
So we'll just have to
I had it earlier in the day, I feel like.
I, I had nothing when I got to this one, so do we want to use it?
Yeah, let's go ahead and use that. Just, you'll have to email this one to Shannon.
Yeah.
That she can put it into the Google Doc.
Right, well, and so that, what I pasted into my Google Doc that I gave to you, which I can give Shannon rights to, has everything. It just doesn't have the track changes for me to walk, walk through with you all. So if we agree with these changes, great, otherwise, maybe Tori, you could be in the version I already put on my Google Docs and give you
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm following now. Yeah, I think that's fine. As long as we can see the track changes, I think what you decide is just fine, and we can just use that final document.
Okay. So
Um, yeah, so, okay, so, yeah, first sentence sounded funny before, but I did like primary purpose instead of activity.
Okay.
Maybe it's just the alliteration that I like. And I think you meant provided it does not interfere with educational.
Oh, no, we want it to interfere. Yes, you are correct. Good catch.
Okay, I'm good with policy paragraph.
Okay, so this is all okay? Purpose?
Is it a hyphenated thing?
It's not a hyphenated thing, but, but it was throughout, it was like
Oh, because it was, okay, yeah, got it.
So.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
So I've been trying to clean it up, but it was less a priority for me than getting the overall thing reviewed.
Yeah.
I particularly like this purpose statement here.
Yes. Agreed.
Can I move on, or are you still
Yeah, sorry, I'm all, I'm down to definitions. Which is good. Looks like you just cleaned it up, which is wonderful.
Nothing, yeah. I moved this sentence here down to here under guidelines. I tried to make this a one, Mike, and it wouldn't do it, so
Okay.
I will make that in my other thing.
Why does that sentence that starts with ongoing just seem like it's hanging out in a weird spot?
Yeah, it's part, part of the definitions, but so there, there's, these are one-time activities, and then I think maybe this should be a bullet then, because maybe
Yeah, and maybe saying like, ongoing fundraising may include
Okay.
I guess, sorry, sorry, wait. Because we have to match it, so it'd be ongoing colon, and ongoing fundraising activity. An ongoing fundraising activity. Should you include but is not limited to? Yeah, okay.
Hey.
I'll make that better. Thank you.
Yep, perfect, and I'll fix formatting when I get it into the Google Doc.
I trust you.
Guidelines, this is number one here, even though it wouldn't take number one from me, but it, it will be number one.
Yeah.
And then two, and then three for guidelines.
Perfect.
And so this funds generated thing felt totally wrong there.
Yeah.
And so
I agree. I like the guidelines, yeah. I like it in guidelines.
Because you don't want them fundraising for anything but school sanctioned activities, right, Mike?
Correct.
And even trips abroad are school sanctioned. We had that whole other policy. Yeah, okay, good.
There's too much ability for fraud, otherwise.
Exactly.
All right, you can keep going for me, yeah.
So this would be three sub-bullets under the administrative responsibilities.
Yeah.
Oops. I was really excited about procedures, apparently. And I didn't know if there were other policies, Mike, that it should follow. We look at number three here.
Yeah, I think they're the major ones.
Right.
Yeah, I can't think of anything else that would be critical.
And is non-discrimination the right word, or is it the equity policy? What, what do I call that one?
I think non-discrimination is
Yeah, that's explained.
In this context.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, wait, on the, sorry, because I've been like going back and forth between like your edits and the recommended one. The recommended guidelines said, "School board cannot supervise or control fundraising activities of any autonomous organizations." Is that somewhere in your edits? Oh, I know. I see it. Yep, that's number one up there.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, okay. Yeah. Sorry, okay. Um, yeah, no, that's Danielle. Thank you. You carried the load for this week, and I appreciate it.
Okay. So I will put that into the version I put on the web on my Google Docs, replacing the version that's there. Fixing the all the goodies there. Is there more we need to do?
That's, that's it. Um.
Look at us banging it out today.
Thirty minutes, guys, freaking
Wow, wow.
Yeah.
Well, there's only four, so that was good.
Yes, what's, I mean, is there, is there stuff left, Mike?
Uh, at this point, we're back into just the regular V S B A updates, so you'll want to talk with the board about how they want to handle that. Do they just want us to bring it to the whole group, or do they? Like, it's usually, I'd say, like quarterly or maybe three times a year. So do we want to convene this group to review them first, or just take everything to the full board?
All right, so for clarification for me, Danielle and I have no more things to review at this moment.
Not as of today. Tomorrow, something may come through, but as of today, no.
Great job, everybody.
Now, the only thing, the only thing I did not get done this weekend, or this, I'm sorry, this weekend, the summer, was the wellness policy, but that'll take some time, and that, we really need to convene a school group with some nurses, P E teachers, other people to do that one, but that's the one thing that's missing.
When are we gonna, when are we thinking of doing that?
Uh. We could probably, I could probably get a couple of volunteers, and we could probably do that sometime this fall. Maybe over a two-meeting session to talk one about the policy and the needs, and then revise it, and then to come back and look at those changes, but I, I think we need to get some other eyes and ears beyond me.
Yes. Well, and we had people interested, so I think that that's an opportunity to really reach with folks and
Okay. I'll make a note to get that moving.
Should that, um, do we need to form like another committee for that, or are we good just handling that? Should we put that to the board?
I think you can, I, I think maybe we mentioned it to the board, but you can say we're willing to handle this, but we need some input from like our nurses and others in the school.
Yes.
I'm a generalist, but they have the specific knowledge of what they see in their realm, because that's, that, that was a really comprehensive policy.
Yeah.
So can our notes reflect, Tori, that the next meeting will be that policy and to be convened, and then this, this idea that we will get volunteers from the board and, and other folks interested, and it will be scheduled for the fall of 2024?
And I just made myself a note.
I don't know if you're keeping notes.
Yep, I just put that in, so I said, we'll, we'll, we'll handle wellness policy next, but need input from board, district, et cetera, to be scheduled for fall of 2024.
Brilliant, thank you.
All right. Um.
Get us getting work done.
Beautiful. All right, well, with that, I'm moved to adjourn this meeting.
My second.
All right, thank you both. This is great. We'll see you next Wednesday.
Thank goodness we didn't have to come to, you know, the library for us.
Well, I, I was so, when I got the clarification from the School Board Association that we are just advisory and we can meet that way, it was, it made a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the school board meeting that's at the end of the month, the 28th, that one will be in person in the library?
In person and Zoom.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Tori. Thanks, Danielle.